Hey, call to order, roll call, and establish a quorum.
Mayor?
Yes?
Um?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Just.
Okay, would you pray for me, please? Father in heaven, we come to you right now and we just thank you for your awesome glory that you are. Father, I just looked up the families, the little school down in Texas, Father. There's no explanation for anything like that that happens. I just pray that they can call on you for comfort in this time. We've come together tonight to make some decisions. I just pray that you bless us with the wisdom and discernment that is needed. I thank you for everyone in the room here tonight, Father, and I pray you bless their families. I pray that you bless Commissioner Higginson, he's gone tonight. In Jesus' precious name we ask these things, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's get right to it. Item Agenda Number Four. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidates for Parks and Recreation Board. There are four positions open. The first and second position with terms ending in December 31st, 2024, and the third and fourth positions with terms ending in December 31st, 2025. So, Mr. Ernst, do you have anything to say before we get started?
No, ma'am.
All right. The City Code of Perkins, seven dash one dash one, Parks and Recreation Board. E. The powers and duties of the Parks and Recreation Board shall be an advisory board and shall have the right to consider any matter relating to public parks, playgrounds, and other recreational facilities, and to make recommendations thereon to the city and to others as may be appropriate. This will be a definite time commitment, and we need board members that will be consistently present and involved at meetings. The board is separate from volunteering to work on the fields, et cetera. As a board member, I see the group finding and organizing volunteers, as well as planning, advising, and administrating activities, programs, and events. We are not just looking to focus on sports, but bring back other community activities. That being said, I would like to have a diverse group on the board to maintain balance and ideas. Okay? So, I want to thank everybody that's came tonight. We have eleven applicants for those four positions. And I'm just impressed with the interest in serving our community. Each applicant that is here tonight will be allowed to speak on their own behalf. You will have three to five minutes. No supporters will speak, but just the applicants. Commissioner's staff may want to ask you a question or two. Again, I think it's amazing that we have eleven applicants for four spots. So, before we get started, please know this. That if you're not selected for this board, we still need you. We still need people in our community that's willing to serve. The story that I've heard is Dixon Park was built by volunteers. Dixon Park and Peters Park is going to have to be rebuilt and fixed by volunteers. And we need a small army to accomplish that. So, even if you're not on a board, there are so many ways and places to help in our little city. So... You will definitely be on the shortlist when it comes to workdays and things that need to be getting accomplished. Do I have any applicants here who would like to speak to the board?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead, come on up.
I'd really like to speak.
Okay.
I'm excited.
What's your name?
Somebody had bright glasses.
Oh, no. Might as well be me. I'm just kind of shaking you down. My name's Lynae Demuth. I live at 6006 East Orest Valley Court in Perkins. And for a few years, Perkins and Parks and Rec has been on my mind. I've had kids that were involved with it several years ago when there was a lot going on. And now I have a third kid involved that hasn't got as much opportunity. And a lot of that had to do with COVID, but even before that, our numbers were going down. And the truth is, it doesn't really matter what happened then, and what was going on then, who was in charge then. What matters is we've got an opportunity to do better and kind of an opportunity to rebuild starting right now. And I think we can start over from scratch and build our own programs to fit us. And we can have programs that have kids that want to travel and play sports. As well, like me, I don't want to go on the weekends and I don't want to travel all over the state. I want to play here or within about fifteen minutes. That's all I can handle. And we can offer local sports to our littlest kiddos, and we can also reach out to some of the smaller towns. Carney wasn't real happy with traveling around with their T-ball teams this year. I've talked to some of those parents. Like, I think we can get some of those small towns signed up, too. And we can also look into best fits for our older kids, and we don't have to sign up the same kids for the same leagues. If the eight and under wants to do this league and a ten and under sign, we have enough for two teams that can do multiple things. There's no reason we can't do that and offer that. The way our city's growing, there's just not a one-size-fits-all for every family. And there were a lot of kids this year that signed up in Perkins or from Perkins that didn't get to play because there wasn't enough teams. And Sasa didn't have enough teams for, to accommodate all of them. And price was an issue for a lot of them, too. There's a lot of businesses that I've talked to that would be willing to, you know, offer the T-shirts for T-ball, for instance, if we can just put their logo on the T-shirts. That knocks ten to fifteen dollars off of a signup price. And we could do a nicer jersey for older kids that they turn back in and we use again the next year. And those are about twenty dollars. And that's all like here at the local T-shirt place that I talked to. And we could have a Parks and Rec table at games that have a flyer about events with a kind of like a tip jar, like throw-in for Parks and Rec. I know a lot of people can't pay an admission fee because they can barely afford to sign their kid up to play, but I know a lot of grandparents that would throw a twenty in as they leave. And all of those things, we could keep the concession stand within Parks and Rec to pay for umpires. All that just takes some cost off the city and off of the kids and the parents. And I think it's also important to remember, it's not just about the sports. There are so many things that we can do. The Christmas lights, bringing those back, that brought a lot of people to town. And the mommy and son daddy-daughter dances, and we could extend that to a sweetheart dance, grandparent dances. I don't know if you guys have looked into some of the surrounding areas, but Hera is one that has a really good Parks Department. And if you haven't looked at their Facebook page, you should because they offer so much. And they have a campout night where they do like a burn, like a controlled burn kind of a thing, a campfire. And people bring their own tents and can camp out in the park and they provide smores. But it just gives them a chance to camp out together. And they do yoga in the park, food trucks. And they have their local dance companies showcase their talents in the park, concerts. I think it'd be fun to get like the senior citizens out in a park and invite the public. And there's tournaments, like kickball tournaments, pickleball, I mean volleyball, hornhole tournaments, those kind of hit different age groups. And you could have, you know, high schoolers and senior citizens all doing those tournaments. And King Fisher does walking challenges where they get like teams, they sign up teams, they log their walks and jogs for a month, and they have prizes for them to win. And as far as the actual parks, I think we need a social media page that's active where we can actively let people know what we need and what we need help with. I think it was, it's very apparent that people are willing to step up and help if we ask the right questions.
Running that?
Yeah, I do.
Social media page?
Yeah, I think one person needs to take that over and really like go with it. And I think it needs to kind of be revamped where, I mean, it kind of starts over, like fresh. Like, we got a new board and this is your board member. And this is what, you know, this is introduce each new board member and the other board members. People need to know who those people are.
About one minute left.
Okay, I'll try. I hate to be there. And I also think it's important that when our citizens are helping, that we acknowledge them and say thank you on Facebook. When people are acknowledged, they want to do more to help. And we can have businesses adopt a park. And businesses love free advertisement, and that's a good way to do it. And also a way to sign up for things that is not coming into the office. I know that might put a little more on something else, but a lot of parents can't come during the workday to sign their kids up for things. And so I think that would be really beneficial. And I think workdays are important. And oh, there's a lot of people who have talked to me about like shade and planting trees. And that can be really expensive. I think we could like, people could basically pay to adopt a tree and we could put a plaque with their name on it or a memorial on it, kind of like the flags, but with the trees in the park. And anyway.
Thank you.
Something I've been thinking about for a long time. I appreciate it.
Before you leave, before you walk off, does any of the other commissioners have any questions for Mrs. Bev? Very impressed with your preparation.
Thanks. You can clap, it's okay.
I'm a clapper.
It's okay, you can do that.
She got all that out in like five minutes. Do we have any other applicants that would like to speak? And yes, ma'am. Come up and tell us what your name is and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Sarah Gold. Do you need my address?
Please.
1608 South August Stillborn. So, I am not from Perkins, but I just want to tell you guys a little bit about me and what I feel like I could bring to this board. So, I work for TSET Healthy Living Program. We're associated with OSU. It is literally my job to work with communities on Parks and Recreation for free and to advise on how Parks and Recreation can just benefit the whole community. I think, I really love Perkins. I live not far. I'm like a ten-minute drive from here. My husband and I spend a lot of time here. I see that there's a lot of passion in this community and a lot of people who really want to see positive change. And just basically like, what I focus on in my role, in my job, is that we know that our kids are the future, which sounds so cliche, but it's true. Having healthy kids and healthy community members is central to any community. And I just really see from my work that like parks are the hubs of community. It's where a lot of people gather. It's where kids go to play. It's where like, if you're a parent and you have a kid playing sports, you spend so much time at a Parks and Recreation facility. It's where we're networking with other people, spending time with other people. And so like, we literally provide services about Parks and Open Spaces Master Plans for free. We advise on those things for free. Wayfinding within communities, and then just creating opportunities basically for people to be physically active through recreation, through, the person who spoke before was talking about like walking challenges. I've like put those together with our program. We've done that for free for communities. And so while I don't live here, I think I could provide an interesting perspective just because of the role that I have. I think I could also provide an unbiased perspective, and that may be helpful in some circumstances. But also just to be fully transparent, I'm having a baby in November, and so I will probably not be super available from like November to January. And I totally understand if that like takes me out of the running, but yeah, this is like what I do for a living, and it's something I'm passionate about. And I'm not going to like by any means claim to know this community better than you guys or anybody else who lives here, but would love to give advice and recommendations. I'd say especially too, when it comes to funding. TSET provides direct funding, and we work a ton with communities on finding them funding for parks, for shade structures, for trees, for recreational activities. There's a ton of funding out there, and we're more than willing to help with grant applications and we're seeking out that funding. So, do you guys have any questions for?
Congratulations on your baby.
Thank you. Thank you so much, yeah. I'm, we're excited, but it's my first, so I don't know what I'm doing, so.
Nobody else does.
I appreciate your interest in your specialties and your talents that you have. And I do also appreciate you coming and speaking tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else? I would love to. Walk back and get to work. Come on up and state your name and...
Hi, I am Heather Moss, and do you need my address? 12610 South Dusty Lane.
Yep?
So, I accidentally ended up on the Parks and Rec Board a long time ago. Like, we were cooking dinner one night and Jason Shepherd called and asked my husband, "Hey, can you come up here and be on this board?" And he's like, "Well, I'm in the middle of dinner, but I'll send Heather." And so from there, like, I was on this board for, I like was trying to go back and count how many years. I feel like it was eight or ten years. It was forever. Like, I started with Lindsay and then Eric and then Ryan, and I feel like there might have even been one in the middle of that. But I feel like what, and it will absolutely not hurt my feelings in one tiny bit if I don't get picked to be on the board, like I still would be happy to contribute or whatever. But like, I feel like what I bring to the table is I've been through it for so long. Like, I have a really good feel of what worked and what didn't and why. And like, I totally echo everything that Lynae said. Like, I feel like we have an absolute perfect opportunity to really start over from scratch. Our community is willing to, you know, dig in and support all these things. And like, I was driving here and there were a ton of people at the community event tonight. And like, I just, I really think our Parks and Rec department can be amazing. And, you know, and like whatever part I can play in that, I'm happy to do it and would be excited to do it. And I would say though, I don't like, four people, I feel like if you had the option, you might consider five people because then you have a tiebreaker whenever it comes to voting things. But like...
There's three on there currently.
So, perfect, awesome.
City charter.
See, I'm surprised I'm not one of those three that's still on there. But anyway, yeah, so like, that's awesome. But yeah, anyway, so like, that's just, you know, I feel like this is a, was a good opportunity for me to throw my name in the hat because I'm glad, I'm so glad that so many other people are interested. And, you know, like I said, whatever, like I'm totally happy for whoever gets on it. But, you know, I just feel like we experienced a lot of ups and downs during that time that I was on the board, and I feel like those can be learning instances or whatever. But, you know, again, like I said, I feel like, like everything that Lynae said is spot on. Like, we can totally rebuild and just go from there. And I feel like we have a really great community and opportunity to make this a really great organization, not just for sports, but, you know, for literally everything.
Thank you, Heather.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
Is what?
If I have any questions. Get back across the street, is that a problem? Is that rude to leave a meeting like that? Thank you.
Great, we all have a great evening.
Any other applicants that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Come up and introduce yourself to us.
Hi, I'm Dustin Pettit. Address is 1612 East Eightieth Street.
Go ahead.
Just to start, these ladies in front of me, blow it out of the ballpark, which if I'm elected to that, I would really like to work with them. So, just perspective, I have two daughters, a six-year-old and a ten-month-old. And as I was picking them up this evening, we drove by the Oak Park, and it kind of killed me because I had, you know, I was like, I need to be at this meeting, but they were both, you know, well, one, Addie, she was like, "I really want to go," you know. But, so we're missing that for this because I think the city of Perkins needs, you know, new blood, like the lady before me. And also I would like to be a representative and also leave a legacy for my two daughters. To be more involved in this, in the city, and also Parks and Rec. I have a history of sports all throughout my childhood. But I would also like to incorporate more of the community. I, in high school, volunteered, and I was also a big brother in Big Sister program. And so incorporating, you know, the retirement homes, maybe some of the elderly citizens, trying to get that perspective in the kids, they always enjoy it. You always get to hear about, you know, history, kind of stories. As a kid, I enjoyed that. And also, just kind of, maybe kind of improving and then also incorporating or increasing teams. My daughter's involved, or wants to be involved in soccer and softball. And I've kind of been driving by the fields, and they're nice, but I think we can do better with volunteering, work hours, workdays, and some of the parks, like you had mentioned, that need to be rebuilt. So, and I also have experience in carpentry and welding. So, I would love to give my time to the city, so.
You, Dustin? Appreciate you coming forward tonight. Appreciate your ideas. That's good. Next. Yes, ma'am.
My name is J.C. Duncan. I live at 1005 Crozier Street. I am brand new to Perkins. I just moved here in November. And I recently just accepted a position to teach second grade at Perkins Elementary School, which is right across the street from my house, so I'm super excited about that. And I really just saw this on Facebook and thought it was a perfect opportunity to get involved in the Perkins community as my husband and I are brand new here. And a lot of you talked about sports, and all those sports are very near and dear to my heart. I am a coach's wife and a coach's kid. I'll kind of talk about the other things that we can do in the parks. Because I am a teacher, I think of having a unique perspective to be able to talk with parents, and not just the parents, but the kids, to kind of get the kids involved and to see, well, what things do you want to go to at the park? What things do you maybe want to see? Do we need to improve the playground equipment? Do you want a water park? Just different things that the kids can do, and I think I could provide that to the board. And those type of ideas is what I was involved in in college. I was the student government president at Northwestern Oklahoma State University. So, that was part of my job, was campus recruitment and trying to get events to get college kids out of the dorms. So, that's kind of just me and why I'm, why I'm here, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Special place in my heart for coaches' wives. My brother and sister-in-law are retiring this year after thirty-eight years as I coached in coaches' wives, so.
Yes, yes.
Did you work for him for summer?
I did, yes. I worked for him at Coyle Public Schools.
At Coyle?
Mm-hmm.
Well, J.C., thank you so much for coming tonight. And your energy is awesome. Anyone else like to speak to the commissioner? Yes, ma'am.
Dear President. Courtney Harp. 1005 East Cross Drive. Kind of, we have the same address almost. I'm Courtney Harp, and the Parks and Rec positions that have been open throughout the time that I've lived in Perkins has always caught my eye. I'm actually a Recreation Management major from Oklahoma State University, and I actually planned on going into Parks and Rec. I ended up doing some more of like the camp side of recreation. And now I'm a study broad coordinator at Oklahoma State. I live here. I am growing my family here. I grew up here. I'm very interested in, you know, giving back to the community that gave so much to me. I loved all the ideas that Lynae had. They were all things that I've thought about for years. And I have a list on Google Docs with all of these things as well. But anyway, I just, and I'm really excited about how much the tribe has been doing in the community lately, and so I can see just a really good connection there moving forward. I'm not good at speaking, so I think I'm done.
Thank you.
You did great. Thanks.
Anyone else? That needs to speak? Yours is me.
May I have any members, current members of the board here?
Yes, we do have, looks like we have one current member of the board here. Megan Delfit.
I was like, "Call him out."
I mean, her name's on the shit paper here that...
I didn't read it.
I've done my research. Would you like to talk to her?
I just wanted to know, Megan, if you have any thoughts, ideas, anything you wanted to speak about while we're on the subject? Since you've got some experience on the board now already.
I mean, why not introduce yourself?
Sorry. I was not expecting you to do this. Megan Delfit, I live at 801 Methodist Avenue. I mean, everything that these women and gentlemen have said is something that we have talked about previously in years past. Obviously, COVID had hit before that, numbers were dropping, and we just were not having a lot of ideas of how to get numbers up at that point in time, too. But I mean, all these ideas, I mean, everyone seems so enthusiastic, and this is not something that since I've been on the board, we have not had. I'm with these girls. I grew up in Perkins, and they've shaped my entire life, and I'm raising my family here. So, these, all these ideas are, I mean, incredible, incredible. And having the support that I'm seeing through social media or anything for this Parks and Rec Department to come back for our kids is phenomenal, and I really do thank you guys for like showing up and doing this.
So, do you think the, the board with seven members on it would be able to get a volunteer force together?
Absolutely.
Because what, what I don't want to see is, I don't want to see the board members going out and doing all the work and wearing themselves out, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I agree. And that is something that before, like we were running into, like it was four or five of us, maybe. And that's who was running, like the movies and the parks, we were the ones running that. There was no volunteer time, the daddy-daughter dances or the mother-son dances. It was those four or five people.
A whole stack of volunteers here, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is like, I can't, this is phenomenal. Like this, I can't even tell you what this says to my heart, just knowing that we do have people that are willing to actually come out and help and make a future for our littles in every way.
Not only are we going to need that board, but we're going to need those workers that are on the ground.
Absolutely.
And helping.
And more, I mean...
And more.
Yeah, no, I agree full-heartedly with that, so.
Thank you, Megan.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you want to bow? Okay, any, any more applicants that would like to speak up? Then we will move forward. Yes, sir.
Can I speak instead of you?
Absolutely.
I want to thank each and every one of you for coming tonight. And Megan, thank you for your service, and those of you that have shown an interest. One of the things I asked the mayor about, and this is not within our purview tonight, I just want you to know that one of the things I asked the mayor about was, can we encourage the board to generate subcommittees immediately so that every one of you can be somehow involved? And I don't know what that looks like, and I'm speaking out of turn. I haven't talked to anybody about saying that out loud, so that's just kind of my style sometimes. But thank you so much for being involved. When I ran for this office, one of the things that I really wanted to see happen was community engagement, and that's what this is. And I'm really proud of each and every one of you for being engaged. These are your parks, and this is your Parks and Recreation Department. It's not the city's department. It's your department. And so what happens when you take ownership of your department, the sky's the limit. So, thank you for being engaged and coming out and being involved. And no matter who sits on the board, every one of you will be part of Parks and Rec if you want to be.
Absolutely.
Thanks, ma'am.
You are certainly welcome. Okay, so I'm going to request that the commissioners write their top four and hand it to me, and then we will go from there on the selection process. I'll have the paper, Tim.
I have one question for you, Tammy, and I don't know if it's a public forum question or if I can just ask you...
Like right now? Yes, ma'am.
Is there a list of all of the people that applied? Oh, oh, yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Thank you for applauding for me, okay. My name is Cassie Wilson.
Write your address.
Uh, 334, oh, it's Lincoln County, 672 East 770 Road. Let's try it. 334672. Yeah, sorry. I was just, hey, no problem. This is my, this is my town. Everybody was great. Of course you saw. Is there a way we can see a list of who applied or is that not?
I'm going to probably say that that's confidential.
Okay.
Because they were sent to the city manager, and then he sent them out to us. So, they're... So they're, you know... But you can ask it again with...
Oh, no, we were just curious if we could see who all applied, but it's okay, we don't need to.
Yeah, I can see it, I just wrote online, or I would handle it like...
No, it's okay. We were just curious, so we can make sure they were volunteering. No, just kidding.
Do you want me to just read the names out loud?
Sure.
Sure. You want to do that, or you want me to do that?
Sure, I'll give it.
In no certain order, I will read off the names. So here is J.C. Duncan, who was our second grade teacher, Dustin Pettit, Heather Moss, Sarah Gold, Lanay Demuth, Dustin Depperschmidt, Alyssa Taft, Trey Ware, Courtney Harp, Veronica Heisler, and Jody McIntyre. Eleven.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all. That's okay, Jimmy, this is...
Jimmy. We're just, yes, we're waiting on Commissioner Box.
They have, they're ahead of me, and... Do you mind if I just say what, I'm not going to say what I asked, but I'll just... I just asked the city attorney a question about something, and I asked her to advise me on something, and that's what that conversation was about. So just to be transparent, I asked her a specific question related to the charters.
And I said, I have to think about that.
I did.
I have a copy of the Park and Rec Charter.
Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. Tammy? We have three unanimous selections, and we have four other separate people on each vote, on each selection.
Okay. What can we bring, ma'am?
So, well, the four of us voted for the same three people.
Oh, so three people got four votes?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
And then four... And then four people...
Somewhat easier than it could have been.
And then, and then four people got one vote from each of us. So, twice.
Well, no, what I, I was thinking was you would just say who those are.
Okay.
And discuss it amongst yourselves, and the, I think the goal was to, for the, the goal is for the four of you to come up with a, to select four candidates. Let me just say, to, just to clarify, you're, tonight you are selecting candidates for the Park and Rec, but also for the PIDA board. And the PIDA trust indenture requires that you appoint by resolution. And so when Rachel and I were working out the agenda for tonight, we put on the agenda for tonight for you to select the people, then I know how to draft the resolution. You come back next month and you actually appoint for both boards. And, and, and so what I'm contemplating for next month would be on the agenda, you know, approve resolution, yada, yada, appointing so-and-so for PIDA, and then appoint A, B, C, people A, B, C, and D for Parks and Rec. So if you, the goal is for you to establish who those four people are tonight and when we come back.
PIDA has to be within the city limits, right, the residents?
Yes, but the, yes, exactly. Parks and Rec does not.
Are we allowed to ask one of the candidates for the Park and Rec board if they'd like to be on the PIDA board? Was that a different agenda item?
What, you know, I, what I would do is banish that thought from your head right now.
Okay.
But if there is, and, and deal, just deal with what you have, but yes, it looks like at this point you only have one candidate, so you would still have one opening, and you could always open that up for the, for the next position, follow your procedure that you established last time, let anybody who's interested submit a letter of interest so that you could fill in with someone who may not be on Parks and Rec. That's my opinion on that, procedurally.
So we've got three, but how, how would you guys like to discuss how we would come up a fourth one off of our votes?
Just had a, just had a idea to throw out, if we struck those other three out of the list, and then pick our top two remaining, and submit those top two remaining back to you and see what happens. Give you two out of the remaining, and then you...
Well, I, I, I get what you're saying there, but these three are already... I mean, you can ask me, but...
That's one, no, no, no.
Oh, for the other four.
Yeah.
For this one.
Okay.
Just take the three that are unanimous off of our list and then give you our next two.
Okay, let's go for it.
But mayor, I would say the names of whatever your results are, since this is a public meeting, and if there are anything going on back there that you're not sharing with the public.
Okay, so selected tonight would be Courtney Harp, Lanay Demuth, and Dustin Pettit. So...
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, um, just rip my list off.
Yours.
And then not mess up your journal.
And again, thank, thank you all, not being selected for this board doesn't mean you're off the hook.
Absolutely. This is a wonderful, tough position to be in, I'll just say that.
So, and who are the other, who are the four that are on the list?
Sarah Gold, Trey Ware, J.C. Duncan. What was your list over there? I didn't see his, his, Veronica Heisler.
And now you're going to take each of the two from that list of four.
We can call those out of the hat if we need to.
Again?
So we'll vote again?
We have a tie. Between, uh, J.C. Duncan and Sarah Gold.
So can we vote again?
That's why you, you guys can do this, however you want to.
So can, can I now tell them what I asked you about? Can we?
So just vote for one this time?
More creative to talk about.
Draw straws.
You're going to get a hat.
We have a tie.
All right.
Are you flipping a coin?
For?
I don't know that that's...
You don't know that that's fair?
You guys can always try to convince each other to change your minds, or you can choose to flip a coin. Those are, or, or there's other options you, I can't think of right now.
What do you think's fair? What do you think's fair, Sarah?
Call Justin.
Call Justin. Sarah, what do you think's fair? What do you think is a fair way to select? Obviously, we're, I mean, you guys are...
Obviously, we want...
We want you.
We want you. You can't bring in the board member and have her break the tie?
Bring in the, the board member? You can ask that person's opinion, but she doesn't get to vote, but you could, you could get her opinion on it.
I want to put you on the spot.
I can see, look at the...
There comes the bus.
Say something again?
Absolutely.
No.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I spoke out of turn.
I don't know if this makes your decision any easier. I will still be doing what I do, like, do no matter what, and like, we work with Bob on stuff all the time, and so like, please don't think that if you don't choose me, that I still am not willing to provide what I said I was going to provide, and I'm not, like, my feelings won't be here. I don't know if that makes your decision any easier per se, but I also understand your, like, interest in having people who are, like, vested in the community and who live here and understand the context of the community better than I do as somebody who doesn't live here and doesn't have kids here yet. But I don't know if that helps at all, just FYI. Maybe that made it more difficult. I'll, I'm around all the time no matter what, because I'm, it's part of my job, that's part of what I'm passionate about, so it's not like you lose me if you don't pick me.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that very much.
Sure.
All right, one more vote, and then we'll...
We're going to vote again?
Drop back in.
Need a piece of paper, please.
All the paper?
I need all the paper.
You guys always laugh at me for having all the things, and all the things...
I'm going to give you a hug.
Okay.
Did we do it?
We did. J.C. Duncan, if you're still willing, you'll fill that final slot for us, okay?
Okay, can I just say real quickly, now you can say, now you can say what you want to say.
Okay, so what I, what I asked our, what I asked Tammy, our city attorney, about was could we ask Sarah to be a non-voting advisor to the board? Because she has a tremendous amount of experience, she works with the T-Set organization, we can't, the, as a commission, we are not allowed to appoint her to that role. So those of you that are on the Parks and Rec Board, I can strongly recommend that you seek Sarah's advice on a regular basis.
I've got her card.
Awesome, thanks. But that was my question to Tammy then, was, and, and I, and we could not appoint her as a non-voting advisor, so...
I would like to end that this with another, yes?
Make a motion. You've got four people, and you've got four positions, but two of them, their terms end in 2024, and two, the terms end in 2025. So you'll need to, uh...
Decide?
Direct us as to whose terms end when of these four people. Now that's when we need the quarter. Just keeps getting thicker, doesn't it? I mean, I don't know if they have it...
Either of the four of you have a preference on which two of you go which direction?
Terms expire in 2024 or term to expire in 2025?
There's, yes, there's two terms that will expire in 2024, December, and then the other two terms expire a year later in 2025. Yes, you do.
I was just going to say that I think you have, like, I have a little bit older, like, kids, and a couple of them have some that really aren't yet involved, and so if I need to take a shorter one, so that somebody that might have, like, kids coming up, that'd be...
Took the words right out of my mouth. I, I, I agree with that.
Well, I will say, right, right, B Board, I've been a part of it.
It's a life sentence.
It's like I never liked this. I mean, all of them I've ever been a part of, it's, when your time is up, it's, hey! Yeah, so...
So Dustin, will you be willing to take one of the 2025?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Mrs. Duncan, would you be willing to take the other 2025?
Thank you.
And that leaves Courtney Harp and Lanay Demuth with 2024. Thank you, Mrs. Demuth, for that suggestion and idea. Okay.
Okay, now. An action item. We need to direct the, or, actually, no, well, this one you don't have an action item.
No action. Okay. I would, these, these letters of interest were amazing. I just have to say that if you didn't get selected, I want you to know from the bottom of my heart that we truly care that you care so much. And there are so many other things that our city needs help with, you know? Also, we never know what's going to happen if we have to replace a board member down the line for family reasons or whatever happens in the universe. So thank you, thank you very, very much, from the bottom of my heart, because Park and Rec is very near and dear to me, well. Commissioner, ready?
Thank you, you guys. Sorry, I just wanted...
No, you're fine.
I've been quiet, but I want to say thank you.
It's kind of unusual. Item agenda number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidates for Perkins Industrial Development Authority Trust with two positions open. Appointed trustee positions, the first position with a term ending April 30th, 2023, and the second position with a term ending April 2025. Do we have any candidates here that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, come up and introduce yourself.
Do you need my address? 101 Cross Street, Perkins. My name is Renee Hackler. I've lived in Perkins about almost 25 years. I have an older son who graduated from Perkins High School, and then I have a son who is 10, who's still in school. Oh, he's 11, sorry.
Very important.
Yes, yes, very important. And so I've been interested in being involved in the community for a while, and I haven't had an opportunity to really get in anywhere, and I'm kind of, you know, just want to be involved in the community, and so I've... And so I've noticed this, I've read up on PIDA. Is that how you say the acronym? Okay. So I, um, I've reviewed, you know, the actions and the agenda meeting, or, you know, the minutes for the meetings and kind of seen, I haven't seen any activity since, like, they sold Red Bud and then there was another, um, you know, insurance thing. And, and so, um, I mean, I'd be willing to learn. I know basically what a trustee, you know, consists of as being a trustee for, um, the trust. So, um, if we could look, you know, at all the different things you can actually do with the trust. I know there are a lot of really tight parameters on what that money is allowed for in development. And so I'd be interested in being on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we happen to, even though there was not, uh, any letter of interest submitted, do we have maybe any of the candidates, um, listed on the Parking Rec Board that didn't make the Parking Rec Board? Or is that a separate?
Can we just, can we just ask, I mean, we have an audience here. Can we just ask if anybody's interested in serving, if they'd like to speak?
Can you explain to everybody what, what this trust is and what it entails?
Yes, I can, but Mr. Ernst would be better at that than myself, if he would enlighten us a little bit about PIDA.
Perkins Industrial Development Authority was created with the notion of building an assisted living center, which they did, and then we sold the assisted living center in 2019. So right now, there's a, there's a litany of things that's very broad economic development-wise, what the Perkins Industrial Development Authority could do with funding. And there has been some, um, interest in looking for creative ways to fund PIDA through the board here to get it more active in economic development. So truthfully, right now, there's not a, right today, there's not a lot. In the future months, there could be more.
Not somebody in city limits?
Inside city limits. And it's, yeah. And the PIDA Board consists of these five and then two more. So you can start with, follow up if you're...
And one of the positions is Commissioner Henninger. He was elected as commissioner. It filled, it opened a vacancy in PIDA. So that's one of the, one of those vacancies is a backfill for Commissioner Henninger's position.
Before you open this up, if you're even thinking about it, I think you should make it clear whether or not you, you're appointing the one person who applied.
Yes, ma'am. We all agree on your name? Yes.
I thought so, but I just wanna...
You're not...
I would like to appoint Mayor, if it's possible, her to the, to the, to the full term available, to the 2025.
To the 2025?
You're appointing her?
Yes. I agree to that.
We agreed. Fine, I agree.
Yes, I guess we should ask her if she wants in that long.
You need to make two separate motions, Tammy, to, on those, or you want me to wait?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. How I wanna say this. Did we... Did we advertise the PIDA opening in the same manner that we did Park and Rec? Okay. I just, I just wanna get everything, and we opened up the availability for the emails in the same manner.
Okay.
Okay. I just, I want that, I just wanted that stated.
So if you, if you appoint a second member tonight, based on an application that's made at this meeting, you are deviating from the procedure that you established at the last meeting?
Well, then, we'll just...
If you can do that, but maybe that makes sure you understand that.
Mayor, I'd be open to, I would be open to appointing, uh, Ms. Hackler to that position and then re-advertising that opening on PIDA, if that's okay with you. I would be...
I think that's the way we should do it. I mean, I've got ideas of, yes, I think that's the way we should do it. We should stick with what we said.
I know what you're stepping in, you bet.
Yes, we, if you've got an applicant, they, we, we could easily provide the PIDA trust adventure and they can get more information about what they're looking at doing.
So, um, you, will you put it out there, add one more week to it, see if there's a, somebody changes their mind and decides to apply for that instead of...
Just do the whole process and your special meeting over.
Uh, I think we could be, we, can we put it on the agenda for our next regular meeting?
Three, it's fourteen. To appoint, yeah.
Yeah.
And then that will give...
Well, we will have the resolution ready. You'd have to...
We can, we can roll that second appointment in another, in a second resolution. Move it to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
We'll have a resolution for one for Renee. We'll have a selection for another position. And they can advertise it again, following the procedure that you established at the last meeting. So will that work? Rachel?
Okay. So we are going to stick with what we said last time. We're gonna advertise it again, put it back out there. At the next meeting, we'll have the resolution ready for Mrs. Hackler. And then we will look to appoint someone else to that position. Correct? Okay.
So I would like to say, if you are not selected for the Park and Recs Board, but you want to be involved, this is a really great opportunity to get involved in your community, so...
And it's kinda like a little bit of automatic self-discipline, because you gotta be at all of the commission meetings. And so it's an opportunity for you to come into all of the commission, all the regularly scheduled commission meetings, because PIDA immediately follows all of our regular, regular meetings.
Quarter.
Quarter follows all our regular meetings. So it's gonna make you come four times a year.
And I think what Mr. Ernst, some ideas that he has to get that trust going back again and what he sees it can be in the future, I, I think will be very beneficial to our city.
And that could lead to more special meetings on the commission box.
So...
Do it monthly.
I think these two positions are very important, and I, uh, I hope we get another applicant for it. Are we ready for item Agenda number six? Consideration, discussion, and possible action to prioritize following drainage projects and identify and approve funding, if available. The corner of Main and Chantry Streets, Drainage Ditch north of Perk Street that crosses Fourth Street, the area south of Fairway Drive, and east of Main Street, and the Seventh Street Drainage Ditch. Staff report.
This is a carryover from the previous meeting. Basically, what staff is looking for is some way to try to prioritize the drainage issues in town, which are numerous. Um, there is a little bit of money that was earmarked, um, the CARES Act money, to go towards some of this. One of the things I talked about on the Seventh, and it says, Ken, where the, or... Seventh Street Drainage Ditch, those culverts going under there, we have a quote for that for $500,000. We don't have the money to do it that way. I don't know that we have the money to do anything there, but that's becoming more and more of a problem as those culverts run out. On Fairway, um, there's a, the street holds water out towards Dart over North Main, and there's a, there's a, it's a utility easement, it's not a drainage easement, that the water's supposed to flow through. So that would be a little bit tricky legally possibly to get in there and work on drainage and utility easement. I mean, I think there's ways around it where you could potentially do a temporary easement, but that'll complicate that a little more. Um, we had the big...
So we would have to get a, I'm sorry to interrupt. We would have to get a temporary easement to be able to work on that?
I believe so. I, I wanna do a little bit more research.
Because that's not an easement for us, is it?
Yeah, it's all about, yeah. Okay.
It may well be a coordination issue.
We have the big, we've, Kirk Street is basically completed. Then we have the big rain, much like the one we had last night, where it is believed by engineering staff that the, what I call the Fourth Street Ditch, which is a ditch that goes from, uh, the Oklahoma Territorial Plaza, just south of the Basser Center. If you draw a straight line east, it goes to Fourth Street, under Fourth, and then comes out just south of the apartments on Lover's Lane. That's what I call the Fourth Street Ditch. There are obstacles in that ditch. A previous resident filled in part of that ditch, built a fence over the ditch. I've taken care of the fence, but it's gonna take heavy equipment to clear out the obstacles. And I'm talking about land bridges, where they took a 45-foot drainage ditch and put a 12-inch piece of pipe in it, and then filled it in. So when we get rain, it backs up, creates a backwater effect. When it overtops Fourth Street, that water flows south into the drainage basin that Kirk Street was designed for. And then there's always Methodist Street, the low-water area where all the water's designed to flow to. There's more work that could be done in that ditch to, uh, remove some material.
It's not, it's not flowing there.
Yeah, it's pretty flat. That's the other problem.
It's, the grade is way off.
Yeah, some of that is design. Some of that is silt. But I think what everybody needs to realize is when you do this, and you, I mean, we just got done with the ditch south of Thomas, and I, and you go look, and there's a lot more silt in there than there was a week ago. The earth moves a lot, especially when it's sandy. Anyway, so what I'm looking for is, uh, where do we wanna focus?
Mayor, can I just suggest that you may wanna take just a quick break? Are you gonna refuse yourself on this issue? Then it's probably best if she just goes ahead and leaves. And there may be some people here who are best interested in this subject, who would also like to leave, and I wouldn't want them to think they have to sit through the meeting.
So...
Take a couple minutes.
We will take a couple minute pause, and then we'll join back up together.
Thank you all again for coming.
Thank you for being...
Um, are you guys sitting in the ballet can?
Come on! Why would we stop going to dance?
Right?
I would do that.
Why would dance season ever end?
Three days is too long.
We should ramble.
I got it.
He's fine with it until he gets a letter.
Here. Number eight.
Yeah, okay.
Ten.
Was that him? Yes. Did you? We got married when I was thirty.
We're, in the three-day accumulation, we're five, five hundredths away from five inches. We're 4.95 at the measure.
It's crazy, it's just crazy.
It's supposed to be more tonight.
Yeah, it's supposed to rain most of the night tonight, too. I don't think quite as hard.
Yeah, really, I mean, I don't know, if you look at... Six point four two.
You ever heard death stories about...
One, one guy had...
They run to the restroom.
One guy had three inches in his rain ditch in town after the, a week ago, Monday, whatever that event, that rain event was. That's a long ride.
Last night I had to stop driving, 'cause I wish the wipers couldn't keep up with it.
Oklahoma does weather fantastically. We're messy as a hurricane.
Yep. It's all or nothing.
It's all of it. It's literally all of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see ya. I look forward to working with the Pida, PIDA.
You can call it Pida if you want to.
I'm not gonna call it Pida. PIDA, but that's my chair with chambers, so, and I can't really do much just by myself in chambers, so...
Are you gonna apply for PIDA?
I'm outside of city limits. I'm Lincoln County. I don't tell many people that I'm Lincoln County, but...
I don't blame you.
You guys made me.
I'm holding against you.
Yeah. Or I totally would, so...
But there's no chamber to do it, I mean...
Yeah. Work together, to establish all of us working together, so... Alrighty. Have fun with drainage.
Thank you.
He loves it when I say that.
Evacuated. Cassie, you forgot to, son forgot to pick up the egg cartons.
We realized that when we got to her house.
Get them to you, 'cause I want to buy some from you, so...
We will reuse the eggs.
Bar fresh eggs, if anybody needs any.
From Lincoln County.
Pain County bar fresh eggs.
Alright, bye, bye. Long day, same. Are you saying?
Yeah.
Are you leaving?
Yep.
Only another one chamber. So there was like a long question.
I know.
A guy, you know that...
She lives down there.
Little grassy sandbur field patch that's like, uh, south of Jason's house?
We can't have a discussion, but can I look at the mountains?
Absolutely.
I had to do some work in that field, like with a box blade or something.
South of Thomas?
Mm-hmm.
With an excavator and a doser.
Too much caffeine, it just goes right through you.
I think that helped a lot.
Is it a thorough Fourth Street excavation?
No.
Just, just... I haven't talked to you guys about when you refuse yourself. I always work in that you leave the room, even if it, I mean, I work in forests where they leave the room for that item and then come back. But one of the things, uh, I think is you can speak with your body language, even if you're not using words, whether you mean to or not, sometimes.
Verbal's are all of it.
And so I, all I always, if you're gonna refuse, I'll always just say, why don't you mean?
Agreed. Are we ready to go? Thank you, go ahead.
Do I recall the rule?
Hold on, it says see you. I want you to hear me.
I know. I didn't know. Oh, because, yeah, you've got my shit.
There's less of us now.
We're gonna, uh, resume the meeting and, uh, reestablish our quorum. You got the time?
Yes, ma'am, so, wait. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Aaron?
Yes.
Autumn and Tesla.
Okay. Bob, I appreciate your staff report. I actually, I actually walked the drainage ditch from the Territorial Plaza down to Lover's Lane, and he's, he's not exaggerating when he says it's terrible and it's gonna take some money to dig it out. There's, there's trees that have to be removed, uh, and then there's trees that need to strategically stay so we are conservative in not, uh, causing any erosion down in there as well. And the pipes that I saw with the land bridges, they're literally that big. And some of them are blocked. One of them was blocked by an old nasty-looking soccer ball. The soccer ball wasn't going through the pipe, but the water, the water wasn't either. And as it starts to get down to the end, past the apartments, it flows into, I think, that the Smith family. So it doesn't make it all the way to Lover's Lane like it's supposed to. It starts going through their pasture. And it, he's got a rain gap on both ends and has to block it so he doesn't lose his goats. Now, I don't know that for a fact, that's just what I saw with my own eyes. So, and then I walked the Methodist one. And the things that were added with the Kirk Street project looked great. But like I said, it, in my opinion, I'm, I'm a farm girl, I'm a farmer's daughter, and this kinda stuff... I'm a farmer's daughter and this kinda stuff is fun. The grade needs to be fixed so that the water will continue to flow. I took pictures of it and it's just, before that big rain came, it was just ponding, standing water with mosquitoes and things like that, so. And after looking at all of it, I just, my opinion is that the Fourth Street Bridge area will fix a lot of problems with, and also not clogging up down there at Kirk Street again. Like Fourth and Kirk floods and it goes into those homes. So if this cleans out, it's gonna be able to hit Lover's Lane, down to the Kirk, Seventh Street, now it's Thomas. So that's what I observed. Is this correct, Mr. Ernst?
Yeah.
So, in my opinion, this is priority than the Methodist. Because, and I know Woodlands and Cloth gets flooded a lot, but this affects the most people right now. The Fairway one, just gonna take some time to gather more information about how to go about getting that accomplished and that one's gonna take the grant to get to other.
Has engineer given us an estimate on the Fourth Street Ditch project?
No, well, yes.
Cost estimate's what I mean.
Yes, and I have one quote. I think it might be unfair to the person that submitted the quote because I'm also getting other quotes if we.
We need to get them all before we involve them.
Can I, let me ask it this way, what is our, what is our presently available funding in our CARES Act dollars and then whatever other dollars you've kind of identified for us?
Thirty-five was in mind, mine 28th and her, I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Ballpark is closed.
But I believe, um. Fifteen to 25,000 on Fourth Street Ditch.
Would be the cost, just.
Cost to clean it, get vegetation out.
It's much less than I was expecting you to say.
And then I think Methodist to go where the low spot is, a Methodist and then hoop around the corner to somewhere, I don't know if it's between there and Kirk or the Sonic Lodge, but there's an island of sand that needs to come out.
A sandbar.
It is a sandbar.
It's just, it's blocking area.
I think that's, um, 2,500 to 7,500. There's utilities, um, and all that material have to be hauled off. Now, the grade is set, um, on the Methodist ditch by a concrete deal, but this, this influx of the CARES Act money will allow us to take care of a couple pretty big deals. Now, the, I do have a, I would think the Chantry and Main, Woodlands and Cloth, I would estimate fifteen to, loosely fifteen to 30. The problem is there's only four to six inches of drop from Main or where it drops off of Main to Chantry, um, to the next block first, and then you have to take the water around first and then under the next street down, so. And there's concrete work involved, we do have a engineered plan for that. Remember my place. That's why this agenda was born because, you know, I was kinda going that direction and then what I explained at the last meeting and I, I don't know that you heard it, was, or maybe you did, um, the Kirk Street project was designed in talking to the engineers, that's about a 10-acre drainage basin. That drainage basin stops or starts right at that Fourth Street ditch on the south side of it. So when they designed that project, they didn't design for any of that Fourth Street water to come in. When it did come in, it was there about 15 minutes, 20 minutes, then it was gone. We had Fourth Street water coming to Kirk Street last night and get right to curb height and it was gone. I mean, it, it, it dissipates pretty quickly, that doesn't help if it's in your house or getting in your house, so. The Fourth Street ditch is about a 60-acre drainage basin that it's catching.
So, based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like Fourth Street and Methodist are within reach of.
I would recommend Fourth Street and Methodist be the top two that I think we can probably get accomplished with the money we have on hand right now that's previously been identified for drainage. And then.
I agree.
You know, if we have more, um, then there's the ARPA money, we gotta start that conversation at some point, but I think that would be a start that, like the mayor said, would affect, have a direct impact on the most homes or people. And that's not minimizing anything else because you can go around the whole original part of Perkins and about every ditch needs to be cleaned out, every culvert.
We're prioritizing projects and there's plenty of projects.
Prioritizing, Bob, that you're diminishing or putting anybody else on the bottom of the total public anywhere. It's just, we have to start somewhere.
And even in the, in the big rain events in the last few days, I mean, the ODOT ditch, it's in the ODOT right away that runs on the south side of Highway 33, right in front of, um, right in front of the Williams home? I mean, there's blocked drainage right there. Trying to figure out, the water was trying to figure out a way to go.
Yeah.
And that, so it's not, it's not limited to city streets. I'm sorry, I'm not certain what I'm looking at. One second.
Yeah, no, I mean, even the.
Yes. Yes, that is right. So I mean, the point being that.
And flash floods, or flash floods, we're never gonna stop all of them, I think, but we can try to minimize them.
I agree. Fourth and then Methodist and then move on from there.
Go ahead.
She's not talking to us. She's not talking to us. Did you saw anything?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, 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 that, yeah, but yes, that would work. What I originally had in my mind was to have a quote before we got here, so they could approve the quotes, but I don't have, I don't have enough quotes to have a lot of them. So I think, yeah, but, but. A motion to direct me to obtain quotes to clean the Fourth Street ditch and the Methodist ditch.
Can I ask a question? If he's able to obtain the quotes by the time we have our special training meeting, can we discuss it at that point? Can we direct him to do so?
Two meetings in between them.
Are we July meeting?
Well, is that until July?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind.
You have, you, you'll have quotes by the next meeting.
I should.
Three weeks.
I don't believe any Friday.
Regular scheduled meeting.
But I should, I, I.
But if you don't.
I believe I'll have some tomorrow.
If you don't, I'll request a special meeting and we'll take care of it.
I, we, I shouldn't have another 14th.
So let me ask, I'm sorry, what is, what is your, what is your spending authority? What, what is Bob's?
10,000.
10,000.
Because we could authorize him to get the highest and best quote for Methodist if it's in the 70, $100 range and just do it.
But that, does that make that the highest priority though? Do you want to say it?
I, I do, I was just, based on his authority, I mean, he could start work on that almost immediately.
And then, yeah.
Okay, then how about we, we say that, um, the priorities are those two projects and directing the city manager to obtain any necessary quotes.
Sounds good.
Is that, will that work? Cause then, then if he gets the quotes and he can do it all about you, he can just do it without you. But you've, you've identified.
I agree to that, yeah, I agree.
Yes. I mean, we've already established what's priority and.
So do we need to make a motion to establish that or?
I would.
Okay. Okay, then I'd make a motion that we, um, establish the top two priorities from the available list as the Fourth Street Ditch Project and the Methodist Low Water Crossing Ditch Project.
I'm so sorry. I'm trying to remember what we called it now that it's on this agenda. She didn't call it Methodist.
Actually, it's not on there, probably because I thought it'd be below the spending.
Oh.
So.
She's right, so.
But that shouldn't affect.
It shouldn't.
Our motion, those are still our top two priorities. Do you want us to prioritize the entire list?
No.
No, but it's not, I mean, really.
That's what I thought.
Methodist is.
Strike that motion, if you don't mind, Rachel, strike.
We're gonna assume then that he has the spending authority and he can get the Methodist done and we have the money for it. It sounds like if you make the top priority, the fourth street, you just leave it at that.
Should I say, should, should I, in this motion, should I say and use other available funding for? Should I mention that at all?
It's not, since it's not.
We have a specific authorization if it's over 10,000 and you're not going after it with others, so I wouldn't even really address the funding at this point.
Okay.
Is that answering your question?
I just wanna make sure that, that Bob's comfortable to go ahead on the Methodist deal. If you're good, I'm good.
If you can't do it from under 10, then we'll come back and start it.
And I'd like everybody to know that we're also at, uh, a little towards, I'm looking for, it's a, it's a, when the contractor can be there.
Right.
Some kind of the mercy of.
Mercy.
So, okay, so I'll make a motion that, based on the, the list and the agenda item, I'll, I'll make the motion that we make the Fourth Street ditch the priority from this list and use, um, funding available based on the quotes received.
A second.
Yes, the findings are. I make the funding if we want to.
Based on the quotes received.
Do we set for ARPA funds?
No.
No.
No?
CARES Act.
Oh, there's CARES Act?
Never mind.
I would just say. I would simply say previously identified funding if I were gonna do anything, because we've already done, we've already identified.
You said that like you've had some sugar.
To be technical, those funds in the CARES Act were, had to be approved by the city commission before used, like again.
Yeah.
So, I, I just.
So you wanted to say CARES Act?
Uh, no, I'm just, I'm just pointing it out, I don't care what anybody says, I'm just throwing that out there.
Even if it's under restricted funding?
Yes, if we use CARES funds.
So, so bef, before we go forward, then, we've got a motion and a second, but obviously still a discussion, do, do we need to?
No, I think your motion is set very fine because you left out the Methodist group lately, right? And then we just put consent to, I don't, or anything that needs their approval.
Yes, that should be under the consent agenda on the next meeting, correct?
Correct. Thanks.
We're good.
Okay, may I bring this back just to be sure I got it? Erin moved to make the Fourth Street ditch the priority on this list, building funding available based on quotes received.
Yes. A second.
Ready for me to call it?
Yes, ma'am.
Erin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
You can do that.
You guys, are we finished?
Based on stories in the news, I'm afraid to authorize any funding right now.
Alright, I make a motion that we adjourn the special meeting.
A second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.